You're watching City Channel 4, your window to our community.
Okay, well, we should get started. What we're going to have now is the joint meeting with the Parks and Recreation Commission on September the 6th, 2016. First of all, I'd like to welcome the Parks and Recreation Commissioners and thank all of you for the superb work you're doing on behalf of the people of Iowa City. And beyond that, I think it probably would be good for us to introduce ourselves to one another because I don't know if everybody really knows everybody, you know, in any kind of direct way. So maybe we can start over there with you at the far corner.
Maggie Elliott.
Suzanne Bentley.
Wayne Fett.
Larry Brown.
Jacob Simpson, I'm a student liaison from the university.
Terry Dickens.
Kingsley Batchway.
Jim Throag Morton.
Susan Mims.
John Thomas.
Pauline Taylor.
Joe Yonker.
Lucy Lorian.
Clay Klausen.
All right, fabulous. So Julie, are you going to start us off with neighborhood parks project update? Is that right?
Right. I'm going to take you through a number of our projects. It's been eight months since I started back, started here back a cold day in January quite a while ago. Actually, the commission is one of the first groups I met with, so it's been a fun group to work with, very committed to our parks and our neighborhoods out in the community. So I thank them all for the work they've been doing. It's a real privilege to be here tonight to do this presentation and talk through all these projects and updates that we have. We joked that you waited eight months so I got rid of my Minnesota accent before I had to stand up here, but I am so glad to be home and so glad to be talking to you about things happening out in our parks.
So you don't speak Minnesotan anymore?
I can if you really want me to. I still got the ufta in me, so. We'll go through the projects. As you know, a lot of these started before I started here, so I do have my great staff behind me. I have Chad Dyson, our Recreation Superintendent, Zach Hall, Parks Superintendent, and of course, Jeff started a lot of these projects as well. So they may help me out if you stump me on a question or two. First of all, though, some of our neighborhood park projects. These are things that we've been doing to reinvest in the parks out throughout all of the neighborhoods in Iowa City. This is Highland Park renovation. Before this picture, you would have seen a very old piece of playground equipment, not much else in this park, just south of downtown by Keokuk. Worked with the neighborhood to pick out that playground equipment, and they did a very nice job of picking out the colors and the equipment. It's been a very popular park since it was finished in July. So we got playground, shelter, and water fountains, along with the Blue Zones and some of the other initiatives we have going in this park. Next, our very popular playground that has been installed at Mercer Park. It's amazing to look at that little old playground up in the top-left corner and see that that transformed into that larger project, a $220,000 playground. And I joked when it first went in, I was going to have altitude sickness at the top of it. It is that tall and that exciting. In the top-left, you can barely see it, but you see the fire truck back here. And that was our number-one comment we got from the neighbors was, "Don't take away the fire truck. We love playing on the little fire truck." So although you can't see that in the main picture below, it has been refurbished through some help from the New and Optimist Club, and it is back in place. We're waiting for tires, and you'll have a whole new little fire truck as well. But that's been a very popular project out at Mercer Park. Tower Court Park renovations, finished about a year ago, new playground and spray pad on the western part of the community over by University Heights. And then this is one that's coming, Pheasant Hill Park Playground. We had our community meeting to choose the playground a few weeks ago. Very interesting. We had sent out postcards around the neighborhood, and kids were lining up, telling their parents they had to come, and they had to come give their input. And maybe Clay and all his grandkids had something to do with that, but they did. And we had almost a little caucus going that night of voting for different types of playgrounds. One, a pair of boys went home and brought back their little sister in a stroller just so she could vote for their playground. So it was exciting. You can see what's there right now is some individual pieces of older equipment. Next, early next spring, we will be replacing it with what you see below, along with the new swing set, which is not shown in the picture. So we're excited to see that coming into that neighborhood. That's kind of on the eastern side of the city. We have another, a number of other neighborhood park projects in the works right now. Willow Creek Park, have a new restroom that we hope to get open in the coming weeks. It's been a kind of a long project out there, new trail works and drainage work, some new backstops for athletic fields in that park. That is almost done and open to the public. Happy Hollow Park, we've had a neighborhood meeting there to replace the shelter and the restrooms, and we are currently have an architect looking at plans for that, so we'll be getting that done probably first thing in the spring. Mercer Park, we finished the playground, and now we're moving on to renovating the tennis courts. We had six tennis courts there. You'll be seeing those renovated to become three tennis courts and six pickleball courts. Pickleball, pickleball is kind of an emerging sport that we're seeing. It's been very popular in our gyms with no real outdoor space right now to play it. So we will have a six-court pickleball there when we're done. Fronholz Miller Park on the east side by St. Pat's Church. Some work was done on this on a master plan several years ago. We've resurrected that. We have a community meeting coming up on Thursday, September 15th, where we're going to look at next steps on that park. It'll be a somewhat smaller plan than it maybe was when it was done six or seven years ago. We're looking at shelter, playground, paths, and landscaping as part of going into that park, and that will also be an early spring project, so spring 2017. And just down from the road from there, we have a new park, Cardigan Park, which a lot of people have not even heard of. It's actually about the same size as Fronholz Miller Park. It's on the east end of court, right before you get to Taft Road. We're looking at doing a master plan with the public meeting tomorrow night, just to find out what those folks would like in that park. Not a lot of funding, other than some open space funds right now to implement it, but we'd like to at least get the plan in place, so we know what's coming there. And then Creekside Park is planned for renovations in 2017. And then Weatherby Park, a late addition, is one that we just received, a $75,000 Wellmark grant to put athletic courts, more athletic courts in that park. So we're looking at building a athletic court that can be basketball, soccer, probably a few pickleball courts there as well. So that will be, and it actually probably joined in with the Mercer Park Tennis Pickleball Court project at the same time. So just lots of things happening throughout the entire city, and we thank you for the support to make all these happen. It's just a really exciting time for those. And next, I want to take you through four of our larger master plans that are in place. We're going to talk a little bit about our Eastside Sports Complex, our Lower City Park Master Plan, our Hickory Hill Park Master Plan, and then Riverfront Crossings Park Phase 1.
Julie, if I could interrupt for just a second. I noticed that another commissioner has joined us. I'd like to welcome you. Please remind us of who your, what your name is.
I'm Kara Hauman.
Thank you, Kara. Oh, Lucy. Yeah, she was there. Okay, Julie, sorry.
Here we go. So the first one I'm going to talk about is our Eastside Sports Complex, on the east side of town, obviously, near the industrial park. We had Hitchcock Design Group out of the Chicago area come in. They started doing work late last fall with city staff and a number of the Sport Association School District. A lot of public input gathered on this. The site on the east side, so Taft Road on the east side, the railroad on the south side of the parcel, and then Compass Drive on the west. The new Hoover Elementary School is being built right about here, above where the map shows. So if you can imagine, we think this will all end up being a neighborhood. So this park is being designed to not only be a first-class athletic complex, but also to help serve the neighborhood that will likely grow in that area as well. So we have to see a little bit of both things in this park. This is a rendering of what it could look like. Once again, here's the railroad. You notice it's kind of a big gap here. They've got some expansion plans that we had to take into consideration on the site, so it's pushed back quite a bit. These are baseball fields, lots of parking, a new maintenance facility. There would be three access points from the neighborhood here, in the middle, and over here. So this is all, if you can imagine that, as housing. They would have the ability to walk into this park. There'll be trails, playgrounds, and some other amenities to help serve the neighborhood. Let me show you on the next map, because it shows it a little bit better. The drawing shows baseball fields with a central area that would include concessions, restrooms, playground, all through here. Then a central area over here that includes some open field space, could be anything from flag football, rugby, whatever the needs are at the time it gets built for big, flat field space. Once again, with a central kiosk area or small shelter in the center, and then another four smaller baseball fields on this side. Once again, playground and concessions in the middle of that. It includes a small dog run area down here, not so much as a satellite dog park for other neighborhoods, but the thought being that we have a lot of families coming to baseball tournaments and coming, they come to the site for an entire day. A lot of them are bringing their dogs anyway, so this will give us a place to have a little extra amenity for those families. And then finally, one of the things that came out as we were doing this plan that wasn't contemplated at the start was that we had requests for indoor athletic space. And you'll notice that's not shown on this plan, but they did leave a spot, one of the soccer fields designated as a potential space for a future indoor facility. And that was something we heard from the commission as well as different stakeholders on the project. We've gone through the plan, taken it back to the stakeholders, gotten a lot of good feedback, and reached this point. It does come with some phasing, so that it could be built, obviously, in a number of phases. The first phase being the first six baseball diamonds along with their facilities in the center and the, whoops, the maintenance, well, you can see the price tag now, too. The maintenance and the parking lot for that. Second one would be the second part of the baseball fields, and then the final would be some of the other soccer fields and other areas. The estimates on the price, we see total package of about $13.8 million, spread out through three phases. That does not include anything about that indoor facility I just mentioned. That is just simply a placeholder there, so. All right. Our next master plan that we have for you is our Lower City Park Master Plan. And what an honor to get to work on this when I first started, because this park has such history here in Iowa City and is such a community icon. It was fun to be a part of it and fun to see, most of the work was actually done before I got here, but to see how consciously the plan was made to keep some of the things that have been really important to our residents, but yet make it a much more usable park. And I have to say, if you've been down there, and not a lot of people were down there this summer because of all the road construction, but if you've been down there lately, there's parts of it that are looking a bit sad, and we need to make some decisions soon if we're going to invest in those or do something larger. Particularly, you can even see it here. We've got three fields that have been somewhat abandoned. They're not really used for any of our scheduled activities, sometimes a practice or two. The areas down here are largely wet most of the time, so there's not much going on there. And a lot of, even small flooding takes out a fairly large part of this park. So the emphasis on the master plan was to continue some of the uses that we heard that were very important from the community, but at the same time, do our best to make them less flood-prone in the future. So let me walk you through some of those things. In the master plan, same number of baseball fields, but they are now behind a road that has been slightly elevated. And this road that goes throughout the park is slightly elevated so that it can help keep the flooding events between the road and the river. And you'll see that most of the active-use areas have been moved between the hillside and the roads. So you have the baseball fields, the tennis courts, a new maintenance facility over here. The Riverside Stage stays largely as it is, except that it is greatly enhanced with a new area around it that can be used for larger community gatherings. So you'll see a picture of that in a second. You can still do the small intimate stage at Riverside Theater, or if we were having a larger event, it gives us quite a large performance space for that. If I go back to the picture before, you notice there are two ponds here, kind of in the middle of the park. Those are actually connected to the river, and part of the flooding issues that have been happening in the park is every time the park would flood, those two small lakes would flood at the same time. So this plan has those two lakes are now gone, and they're replaced by a wetlands area down in this area that has been fairly historically wet for the last several years as well. So a new water feature here, and it's gone from the center of the park. Ice skating was one thing we heard about. That may be different in this new plan if we go this route. What we show is an ice skating track instead of an ice skating pond, so right here, you can hardly see it on the plan, but this is a kind of an ice skating trail. Very popular in Minnesota. We've built a couple up there that were just extremely popular, so we think that would be, and I didn't add that. That was added before I came down here, but I was like, yeah, that's, that's been really popular. New boat area over here, adventure playground eventually, and the amusement equipment, the rides, would be moved up out of the flood area. Here's a picture of what is anticipated for the Riverside Stage area. So the stage stays in the same place that it is. It is added, there's an added stage area around it. One of the comments we heard in the master plan process is, "That's a lot of concrete," so I would agree. And I think there'll be some landscapers, some other things to soften that if we were to actually go this route. And then this is a large, somewhat of a large bowl area, so that you could indeed have events, larger events where you would have a staging up here and have room for quite a few people out in this green space around it. Flooding is one of the things I've already talked about, but this is a, a map of current, where current flood levels end up in the park. So basically, to simplify it, pink and red, not so good, and even some of the orange. So not, just a typical flood that we might get a couple times a year oftentimes takes out those areas. This isn't talking about the large flood events of like 2008. This is the smaller events in between. So look, take a look at this picture. The new plan, you can see it moves the pink and red out. So basically, the orange area is where the road would be within the park. So we keep everything in the road pretty much from there up to the hillside, more flood-proof than it had been before. Not completely flood-proof. If we have a 2008-type event, again, the park's going to be largely underwater again. But in between types of floods, like you might have experienced a few years ago, this would keep most of the public use areas up out of the floodway. Everything in the darker purple or darker red and pink areas would be designed so that it is flood-able. So you would have trees that are more flood-tolerant. You would have, any structures in there would be simply like open picnic shelters so that the water could go through and fairly easy cleanup afterwards. Phasing again for this, we've shown this in a five-phase. It could take six or seven years, though, however. Phase 1 is a lot of earth moving because, because it includes filling in the two ponds and replacing them with the larger one down over on this part of the park. And then Phase 2 goes towards the Riverside Stage area and some of the road. You'll notice there is an access road shown here from Normandy Park Neighborhood. Another big touch point of the entire process was the neighbors being concerned about that. This plan doesn't anticipate that road being a final end-all, always an entrance into the park, but it does show that it would be necessary during certain phases of this project. So as work is going on over here, in order to access the baseball fields and some of the park amenities over here, you would need that access, at least on a temporary basis, to be able to do that. And it also shows a maintenance access, which comes down to a new maintenance facility. Price tag. Lots of things in this plan. The earth moving is, by and large, one of the larger parts of the project, getting it reshaped, getting the road elevated, and then the Riverside Stage. There's a lot of things in it. We've looked at ways that we could value-engineer it and bring some of the cost down, but it is, it would be a large commitment to this park if we wanted to, to do this route. Next, Hickory Hill Park Master Plan. This is what I've gotten the most questions about in the last 24 hours, so I know that it's, it's highly watched out there. People are very interested in it. What a great park. I mean, amazing asset for the community. This project's a little different in that there is funding available right now. We have $200,000 in the CIP this year, next year, and the year after. So we brought in Snyder &amp; Associates, did a public master plan process. We had friends of the Hickory Hill Park on the steering committee. John served on the steering committee as well. And a lot of discussions that I could summarize by saying, people really love this park, and they love it the way it is. So you'll see that the master plan is not really proposing anything that is that different from the nature of the park right now. Let me walk you through. So the main things that it talks about is shoring up the current trails that are there. Any changes to the trails that we see are largely because of erosion areas or things that we need to redirect it to make maybe a better stream crossing or make it safer for people to use. There was a lot of talk about how much we were paving Hickory Park, or Hickory Hill Park, or maybe not paving it. So let me just show you that on the next slide. This plan would propose two areas of paving, and they're fairly small. They are called primary trails, and they are by the Conklin Street entrance. So you notice a loop here. It's already somewhat milled asphalt, so it's already fairly hard surface, but that would be one of the areas that the plan proposes to possibly be paved. And then another loop down here by Bloomington Street. The reason for both would be to provide some sort of access to areas of the park, so other people with mobility disabilities could experience the park in some way. The thing about the plan, though, is that although they're called primary trails and they're paved, they came up as a third priority. So you'll see that it's fairly far down the line as far as where those might be. The other thing that was discussed would be a bicycle trail connection from First Avenue through Seventh Street, Seventh Avenue. That's not shown on this plan, other than a note that this could be a possible bicycle connection if there is future funding available from a different source for that. So the plan proposes working, first of all, on the secondary trails, and that's pretty much what you find out in the park right now, that are already limestone or asphalt milling trails already, and entails shoring those up, making them safer, filling things in, doing a lot of bridge work. We've got some bridges that could use some, some attention out there. And then signage is the third part of the first, first priority. The signage, we did hear from people that said they enjoy getting lost out in the park, but by and large, I think we really want people to know where they're at and not have to send out the police to find them. So the, the signage would be pretty minimal, but allow people that are new to the park a way to find their way out once they get in the midst of the areas out there. The other things that were contemplated were some additional amenities, especially around the Conklin Lane or the Bloomington Street entrances. These are the areas that are already fairly well-developed recreational park areas. We know that there's Boy Scout, Girl Scout troops that use it, so some things like a council ring, or we all learned what a Gaga pit is. It's a new game that kids play, where it's an enclosed circle, wooden circle, and it's like dodgeball within a circle. So the possibility for some of those kind of things, but those are, once again, lower down in the priority list. So our high priorities on this, on the list would be secondary trails, so shoring up what's out there as limestone or asphalt millings. A lot of discussion at the commission level and at the master plan meetings about the values of one or the other. The current master plan doesn't call either one out as a priority. It leaves it to the time when we're ready to actually do the work. We have both types available out in the park. We have both lovers of both kinds of surfaces, so I think it'll be an ongoing conversation at that point. Bridge improvements, something that's needed in Phase 1, and then the signage. Then the second phase, medium priorities, would start to look at some of the primitive trails. And once again, there's not much on this, other than keeping the trails clear. Some of these would be rerouted to areas where there's less erosion and would make it safer and easier to cross. Potentially, a new playscape, a natural playground area at that time. And I think everything from that list on down are things that could be added in the future. The $600,000 currently in the budget really pretty much takes the high-priority items and potentially one or two things off the secondary list, so. Lastly, one of the larger projects that we just kicked off with Confluence and H.R. Green as our consultants is Riverfront Crossings Park Phase 1. Phase 1 is the wetlands work and the stream bank restoration. They did this new, they took a drone out and did this aerial work already, so they're starting some of the background research on the project. So we, here we have the park area. You'll notice over here, the Riverfront Crossing area where the new brewery is going to be sited. So Phase 1 will also include a crossing of the creek, so that people can use the park and get to that area as it develops. Phase 1, as I take you through the next slide, is the southern portion of the park primarily. It will look at the wetlands area. It will reconnect the trails, connect the park to the area over here, and do some stream bank restoration of Rolston Creek. It will start to look like a park after that, and the construction will be approximately a year from now, but it won't look like a traditional park yet at that point. So Phase 1 doesn't include things like the parking lot or the shelters or restrooms or anything like that you might see in a park. It does shape it and get it ready for future additions after that point, but it does get the wetlands area, which we are required to do through our state hazard mitigation funds completed. So there we have Riverfront Crossing Park. And if that's not enough, we have three major planning efforts that we are in the process of kicking off right now, and I'll go through those just very quickly. First of all, we have the Park ADA Access and Facility Master Plan. There's a contract for that later on the agenda tonight for your approval. Our hope is to have the firm come in and go through all of our parks, and first of all, look at all of our recreation facilities in the parks, so shelters, ballfields, playgrounds, restrooms, and see about our ADA access. Do we meet ADA guidelines for all of those things? At the same time, looking at the condition of all those facilities to help us prioritize where we're at on the overall park system and what expected lifespan we'll have on all of those features throughout the park. Then next, January, February, March, we'll be having a public input process to look at the question of what else would you like to see in the parks? Here's what we have. Here's how we've measured how we're serving all areas of the community. Then we'll get public input, and the next spring, you'll see that come back to us as a big master plan for the parks. Last one done in 2008. That was right before the flooding, but it's amazing. Most of that plan has been completed in one way or another. So staff has been working hard following the master plan. It's just time for a new one to reevaluate where, where we're at and give us a vision. The next, the Natural Areas Maintenance and Master Plan. This is for all the other areas throughout our parks and a number of other city-owned sites that aren't technically high-use recreation areas, but they're areas that we maintain. So this can be wetlands, stormwater areas, prairie areas, some of our larger forested areas. We're going to contract with a firm to come in, analyze all those, first of all, for, see how ecologically healthy they are, and give us some ideas of what we need to do to maintain that, so that we can prioritize that as well, because it's another big thing that we're doing throughout Parks and Public Works, is making sure those systems are all working. And then finally, we have our Tree Inventory and Emerald Ashbore Response. So we right now have RFPs out to hire a consultant to come in and do an inventory of all the trees. That'll help us answer the question of how diverse are our trees? Where are there other areas we can add more trees? And the big one, what are we going to do about Emerald Ashbore? How many are there? What's the cost going to be, and how can we replace and come back from that? So just a really exciting time happening with all of those planning things as well. We've got plenty to keep us busy, that's for sure. That's it. You'll entertain questions along with the commission and the rest of the staff.
Fabulous job, Julie. Thank you very much. It's pretty exciting work. I wonder if Clay or any of the other commissioners would like to elaborate on anything that you said, just to draw our attention to particular features of the, of the, all these proposals, or not, and then we'll get into questioning. Sure.
Thank you. It's our pleasure to be here this evening, and I certainly appreciate the invitation and the chance to do a co-meeting. And I speak for myself, because everyone else has their own voice, but as the chair of the, of the commission, I had the privilege to sit in on the interview process when Julie was hired, and there were a number of outstanding candidates, but they weren't even close to Julie. So I think we're very lucky to have her back in the community and look forward to working with her for a long time down the road. Of the projects, one thing I have note is that Parks and Recreation is growing. The staff is not growing. The production is growing. The quality of the work, I think, is getting better and better. So it's almost like a magic act to get more out of less, and I know that we have challenges ahead of us funding-wise, and I'm, I'm kind of a numbers person. I like to keep track of budgets, and I know that's going to be a challenge for all of us down the road, but I think we're all willing to work together to get something done and keep the community moving forward. I do, I'm excited about the Riverfront Crossings Park and the Eastside Sports Park. Boom, big expansions there. And I look forward to working with the council and appreciate all your support.
Terrific. Any other commissioners?
Well, I do, hi, I'm Lucy Lorian. I think it's fabulous in just the scale of what we've been producing. I don't know if I like the word "producing," but putting forth as for public use has been phenomenal. I, I have a general question, maybe that's more of political relevance, is to why do we need so much reliance on external consultants? If there were a few more staff, we could do more things in-house. So that's what goes with Clay's comment that, you know, maybe we could do our own tree inventory. Maybe we could do our own tree planting or planning for parks if there were more staff resources. And we tend to rely a lot of consultants, which may be wonderful sometimes. Sometimes they don't know the place as much as we do, so that's, that's a budget issue also. On that line, I have a comment on the final master plan for Lower City Park. I haven't seen a hydrological report that shows me that it's a good idea to have a pond open onto the river. I've asked for it, and the consultants seem to say it's a good idea. I've asked for it, and the consultants seem to say it's a good idea. It may be a good idea, I don't know if it's a good idea. I have doubts about having literally a bowl into a flood plain in terms of flooding impacts. I think these may not be the best designs. But again, we rely on consultants because we can't do it in-house, and so we get ideas that may or may not be the best ideas out there. So these are my concerns with Lower City Park. But again, I think if we can rethink, what can we do in-house, what do we rely on consultants for, that'd be a wonderful thing to do, maybe not for, just for parks, but for other departments too. That's my comment.
Thanks, Lucy. Okay, well, council members, Rockney, welcome.
Thank you.
Any council members have questions or reactions or anything?
I personally just want to say, amazing, beautiful parks. Love the fact that the Commission has had a hand in working and putting this plan or asking questions around these wonderful parks. My son loves Marsler Park especially, and I did not know about the fire truck, and so that's going to be actually a sticking point between him and I, because I'm not going to be able to get him out of the park now, so that's great. Questions I had about some of the things are, I had three questions. One's focusing around that wetlands area that you had mentioned. Is there any thought on, I think that's a huge concern now that you bring it up, but then also I was thinking about the usability of that area, and so I think about Terry True Blood and all the wonderful things that are happening there. Are there things along those lines that are maybe being considered for use from that standpoint?
Yeah, and let me bring this up again real quick. So I believe, you know, Lucy's concerns are about the way the Riverside Stage area is being built, and it, you know, it is an area that will eventually flood if we have a very, very large flood. It's being made as flood tolerant as we can, and the idea being that this road system and actually the top of this public viewing area, the green space, is high enough that it should keep the water out. There could be some, we will likely, I should say, need some kind of pump in the very bottom of this bowl, as you would in front of the stage. That's being contemplated as part of the plan. As far as the wetlands area going here and the usability, that area of the park is largely not usable right now, and it hasn't been for a number of years, just because it's so often saturated and so often so wet that we can't, we have trouble mowing it even. So I think this will only add to the recreational uses of that area. There are a number of trails included in one of the last phases, similar to what you see in Terry True Blood through that area, trails that could indeed be flooded occasionally and brought back.
Okay. My other question was looking at the, you mentioned the ADA, kind of accessibility work that you'd be doing in kind of almost all the parks, right? All the parks in?
Correct.
So a comprehensive look. You know, one thing I think about that is, you know, is it, are we going to be moving on projects that may or may not be as ADA accessible? I mean, obviously, I know you have your minimum requirements, but if the, you know, consulting group comes back with more advice or more suggestions or more recommendations as far as how we can be more compliant or even better accessible, you know, are we going to be able to kind of draw back or pull back on some of those plans? That's, I see a lot of our master plans moving forward, but then I worry that we're going to have this consulting group come in too late for some of the big projects that we're doing.
Well, first of all, all the new projects are definitely built to standards to be ADA accessible. So we know that all the new construction and new projects will meet those guidelines to begin with. I think the beauty of including the ADA with the Parks Master Plan is that you'll get a chance to weigh those things of, yes, we have to meet minimum standards, but it'll be a question of how much further do you want to take it, and where does that fall in priorities with all the other projects? That'll be a really interesting question for us, along with the age of these facilities. Some of these shelters are older than our longest-serving Parks Maintenance folks, so there's a lot of interesting questions this is going to bring up, for sure.
Okay. And my last question was around trail accessibility, and so as you talk about ADA compliance or having, you know, it be more accessible for, you know, all persons, I guess in looking at that, is there going to be some work, or, and I guess I'm asking a question more towards the future, to ensuring that trails are accessible for, you know, everyone using them instead of, you know, just able-bodied folks?
I think so, yeah. I think that's the direction we'll go. Now, that doesn't mean that every area in all parks will be accessible, though I think that'll be one of the decision points, since there's some areas that putting in an accessible trail would either hurt a historical property or make it so, you know, the trail so big that it ruins the thing that you're going out there to see in the first place. So I would say that you will want to work towards a nice balance so that people have opportunities to see all different types of areas and experience them, but maybe not every area that we have.
And that's especially true for Hickory Hill Park.
Hickory Hill is a great example. I mean, we'd want to make it as accessible as we can, but there's certainly areas there that I think you would kind of mess with the overall feeling of the park, and there are ways to experience it in different sections or different parks, too, so, yeah.
So, other questions?
Is there any idea what you're going to do with the Pappy Dickens Reserve? I know it's part of Burrow. Is that going to remain natural, or are they going to put trails in there eventually? Because it's...
I think we didn't really talk about that during the master plan. I'm not that familiar. I don't know if John or Pete can jump in on that, no?
I just, I'm surrounded on three sides by that, so I just was wondering how much is...
No, okay.
Nothing right now.
I knew I had them all up here for a reason. These are all my smart people.
Well, I just want to say, you know, this is, this is an area in the six and a half years that I've on the council that, you know, we've seen more and more demand and aging facilities and things that need to be done, and it's nice to see these master plans really start rolling out and kind of looking at how are we going to phase, you know, improvements and additions to our parks, you know, to meet the needs of the members of the community. And I think, as you mentioned, Julie, part of it, and Clay, you kind of mentioned you're a numbers guy, there's a lot of big numbers here, and that, that is going to be a real challenge for us, you know, as we go forward and look at all the other needs within the city. But it's certainly, I think, a crucial area in terms of continuing to make this community a very popular, welcoming, you know, destination for people who think about moving here, want to live, work, play here. So it's all really important to that, you know, that part of our community. And so being able to find that balance with all the other financial needs within the community, I think, is going to be huge, and, and just like some of the other areas, you know, whether it's the animal shelter, whatever, hopefully fundraising can also play a part, because I, I think that's the only way we're going to get to some of these in a reasonable amount of time. But I want to thank all the commissioners and you, Julie, for all the work.
I have one question and then a couple of comments. The inventory, the tree inventory would cover street trees as well?
Correct. In fact, primarily street trees. I don't believe it covers actual park trees in this round.
Street and park.
Street and park, okay.
Okay.
Excluding Ryerson Woods and the interior of Hickory.
Okay, so, street and park trees excluding Ryerson Woods and the interior of Hickory Hill Park.
Good. You know, it's a really great presentation. A couple of things I would want to emphasize is I'm really pleased with the, what I'm sensing is, you know, more attention to the aesthetics, you know, the, you know, seeing those before and after shots. You really get that, in that sense, and so I, I really want to encourage that, and I want, I would like that level of aesthetic concern to be consistent, you know, with respect to whether it's a large kind of destination project, a, you know, a Riverfront Crossings project, or a small neighborhood park project, that that same concern about aesthetics be applied across the board. One thing, and I know I've mentioned this to staff when I've gone on tours with you and Zach, is that sociability, I think, is a really important aspect of park use. And I've noticed on some of the neighborhood park projects, but it may apply even broader than that, where there have been renovations. I was looking at Highland recently, and the playground looks great. I really like the way it was integrated with the slopes and so forth. I didn't see any seating. I don't know if the seating is coming later, or...
I think it actually went in last week, end of last week.
For Highland, the seating is coming.
Oh, it is coming, okay.
Yeah, we're close.
It's phased, phased seating, so...
Same with some of the pathways you haven't seen there yet. I knew that was probably coming next.
So, but in general, I often find that, you know, the, I'm a big fan of having lots of places where people can linger, make choices with regard to where they position themselves in a park, gathering spaces of different scales, that sort of thing. And then in line with the finances, I mean, it is kind of, it sort of blows you away to see, you know, the costs of some of these, these major park projects, and kind of in the line with our discussions in council on land use, I really want to encourage us to utilize to the best ability we can what facilities we already have, first of all. I would encourage that we look at partnering, to the degree we can, with the school district, where, you know, we don't have a neighborhood park serving the larger residential community, but we have a school sort of placed in a convenient location within the neighborhood that we, we consider using that as, you know, rather than acquiring land by the Parks Department coming up with a joint use concept. And that might apply to fields as well as neighborhood parks. I think we are at a point where we, we can't duplicate. We have to be thinking across departmental lines so that we, you know, maximize the benefit of what we have and don't overreach. And I think, you know, my experience in San Francisco, there had to be some redundancy because the school districts were not comfortable, the school district wasn't comfortable having the public going on to their school sites. Here, fortunately, I don't think that's really an issue. So I think that's an opportunity where we can, you know, the schools would benefit from that as well, you know? Their sites then would become more valuable to the community. So those are some of my thoughts.
I'd like to applaud you for, many times during your presentation, you mentioned public meetings and the neighborhood input, including the children, and I think that's a wonderful thing, especially wonderful that you listen to the children on, on what they'd like, because they're a major part of the users of these parks. And so I really would like to applaud you and the group for, for listening to, to the public. And I would encourage, if anybody's listening out there, she mentioned the two meetings coming up tomorrow and then on the 15th for the two different parks, and, and I would encourage people, obviously, they do listen to public input, and that's wonderful.
And I would mention on both of those projects, we also have an event on the, on the Parks and Rec Facebook page, so if people aren't able to come to the meeting and still want to give us input, we'd love to hear it, and they can enter it there on the Facebook page as well.
That's great.
Julie, I was just curious, has the, have you tried to touch base with a possible meeting with the school board, for example, with a joint meeting of city council, school board? I mean, there's so many issues that affect the entire city, you know, that are tied very closely to the school district and the city council, the things that you're doing. So I think, you know, it might be worthwhile to try and schedule a joint meeting or two, maybe every year, you know, to, to think about the things that they're doing so that we're not overlapping what they're trying to do, and, and plus, we can help out, you know, what they are, are doing. The other, the other question I had was, is, is the Eastside Sports Complex, is that actually part of an industrial area, or when will the decision be made there whether that's going to be an Eastside Park complex or an industrial complex?
Jeff, why don't you address that particular point? I could respond to the first part. We have joint...
I was just curious.
We have joint entity meetings on a quarterly basis with the school board and other municipalities in the county and so on. Plus, Susan and I meet basically on a quarterly basis with the president and vice president of the school board of directors. So there are these opportunities for conversation along these lines, plus staff has interaction with the administration of the school district on, with regard to joint use and that kind of thing.
Yeah. Regarding the Eastside Sports Complex, no decision has been made on whether it should stay industrial or go to parkland. What we wanted to do is, is show you what, I think we all can envision what the industrial use may be and what it may look like, and how that may interact with the neighborhood. We didn't have a concept to really talk about publicly on the, on the, on the park piece, so at the time, Mike Moran and I and staff sat down and looked at our needs in the community, and it's not too often you have 70 acres of parkland to work with, and one of the areas where we really needed to, to expand in is in our sports fields, particularly baseball and multipurpose fields, so that's what we focused on. You know, if we don't use this opportunity and decide to keep it industrial and market that property and ultimately sell it, I think we're going to have to really be thinking about what our next steps are in terms of field expansion, because we just don't have that type of ground available for that number of fields, and it would be pretty expensive to go out and acquire that land.
Jeff, do you know, what's the size of the Hoover School area out there? I'm not sure, is anyone familiar with how much ground is tied in with the new Hoover School?
I don't know.
Yeah. I don't know how large it is. It's, yeah, I, I don't know. Nothing at the scale of what that park would be. And, and there's a, there's a bit of a distance. There'd be a pretty sizable neighborhood between this park and that school.
Thank you.
Yeah, I guess I'd like to echo basically what other people have already said, and I don't want to repeat the details of that. Three particular aspects come to my mind with regard to the Eastside Sports Complex, if we get to the point where we're going to fund it, because that decision hasn't been made yet or anything, but, but if we do, I think it's really crucial to have it very well-integrated with the residential neighborhood that will build out north of it and be connected with the new Hoover Elementary School. So I, I think that's crucial, and so we'll get to that at some point in the future. Also, I'm very glad to see that the plan and budget can, has money in it for repairing the bridges. I've been hearing from various people about how the bridges in Hickory Hill Park are in, pretty sad conditionally some of them are, and they need attention. Lastly, I think, I don't want to speak for Lucy Lorian, but when, when I look at the, the map of the city park plan, I see a lot to admire about it, but I do puzzle over the Riverside Pond, because it's my understanding that it, it will flood, and that means there'll be siltation in the pond, which means over time that it'll have to continually be cleaned out. And if that's part of the plan, fine, as long as that's taken into account, but that just seems to me to be a pretty obvious thing that will happen as a result of normal recurring flooding in that particular spot. So anyhow, Julie, there you are. Brilliant job on presenting this material. It's very exciting, if ambitious, which is a word we've used on our council before about various things we want to do, and it's really pleasing to see the good work the Commission has done on this and the staff has done.
Thank you very much. It's been a pleasure to be here and to have the Commission and the council together. Thank you.
Is there anything else that we need to hit on with regard to this?
Oh, I'll just add one more thought, since I smoked last, and that would be, it seems the, you know, the, many cities have friends of parks systems that really help, you know, if we're talking finances, and, and my sense is that there isn't a real strong one in Iowa City, is that...
We do have one, and in fact, it'll probably be a part of the, under the umbrella of Community Foundation very soon, but there is a Parks and Recreation Foundation. It was very active during the Terry True Blood development, has not been quite as active since and are very active at all, really. But we still receive a number of donations for smaller things like benches, trees, and that sort of thing through the foundation. They aren't taking it much beyond that right now, but it does exist.
Good.
Be stronger.
That, so that and volunteerism, if to the degree we can promote volunteerism. I just sent Zach an email today. I don't know if he had a chance to see it, but I just spoke with someone last week who's really keen on becoming involved in, you know, community-based volunteer street tree planting, which is often done in cities as well. So that, too, might be a way of deferring, reducing some of the cost and build community at the same time.
One last point of focus I forgot to mention around accessibility. As I was just thinking here, if I, I just moved from the west side to east side, if I was on the west side and I wanted to use a sport complex, it'd be really hard for me to get there if I didn't have a car, and so I don't necessarily know what kind of conversations are happening, because I see Chris in the room with the Transportation Department, but thinking about how that plays into accessibility in the park and other things would just be huge from that standpoint.
Definitely.
Can I add something, or is it out of order?
No, go ahead.
The, the one park we haven't talked about is Chauncey Swan, across the street. I've had a concern, I've shared my concerns with everybody, I think, over time, that it'll be used for staging, which is fine, we've agreed to this. It'll be used for geothermal underneath, that's fine, we've agreed to this. But what is not clear to me, and maybe it's clear to you, but I've had discussion with our city attorney, and it's still not clear to me, so after many emails, I don't think we have agreed to give absolutely 100% of the square footage of the park for the geothermal system. I have seen plenty of documents, and it is never specified... I have seen plenty of documents and it is never specified that we give 100%. It says we specified an area that was described, to be described in exhibit, which is not available. So as far as I understand, we as the city, and I don't know if it's you or just our attorney, I don't know who that "we" is, understand that we will give 100% of the park for the geothermal. The developer understand it also to be 100% makes sense from their perspective. But I don't know that we really understand it to be 100%. Our attorney does, but I'm not sure on what grounds. Do we know that they need X amount of square footage for X amount of wells to produce X amount of kilowatt hours per, I don't know. I've never seen anything like this in writing and I've been struggling to find that out. I, it is my understanding that we could ask that part of the site, maybe on the east side, would be reserved for anything the city might want to do in the future, building a tree that could grow 200 years, putting bathrooms and 200 years down the road if we wanted, something, right? In that case, we don't want geothermal under 100% of the site. We'd want some part of it to be left alone, so we could someday build something. And I don't have clear answers. I think, I think our attorney understands to be, we've already agreed it'll be 100% of the site, but I don't know on what grounds she does that. And I have never seen any document that justifies that. And my sense is that we are currently giving public assets to the private sector for free without justification. That's a very strong concern of mine. And I don't know if you have any answers to this, but I know our attorney doesn't.
Thanks Lucy, I don't think we're prepared to discuss that at any length here tonight.
That makes sense.
I would suggest that you talk with Jeff, where are you Jeff, about your particular concern. He may have a different perspective on this, I don't know. But thanks for bringing it to our attention. And I think we need to, you know, move on from this. So thanks to the commissioners for coming. Where are you Marion? So we're going to need a little bit of time to make a transition here, right? So we need to take about a two-minute break while we adjust chairs and stuff like that. Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we're going to return to our work session of, what is it, September the 6th, 2016. Questions regarding agenda items?
I would like to ask that we pull 3D 3, the traffic calming.
Okay. Let me make a note of it.
I guess I had questions in regards to that one.
Do you want to ask them now or during the meeting?
I probably would ask them now because I don't know, I know it changed based on Pauline and John talking with staff. So I guess my question is, you know, the rationale for lowering the, I think it was the, let me go back. It kind of explained to me the approval rate being higher than the response rate. Because if you, let me go back to it, sorry, I've got to flip between both packets.
While you're looking Kingsley, I'll comment too. I mean, my concern with those lowering is you're really getting it down to only, all you need is 30% approval.
Yeah, so that was-
In the neighborhood before the city would move forward, that seems pretty low. If all you've got to have is a 50% response rate to the survey and a 60% approval rate of those who respond-
Yeah.
You're down potentially to only 30% of the neighborhood wants it and the city's going to spend time and money on it. I think that's getting kind of low.
What Susan said. Because I had not done the math in my head yet and so it's been taking a while.
Well, we could just defer discussion of that to the formal meeting, but recognizing that we're going to pull the item and have a separate discussion and vote on it. It seems to me that'd be the proper thing to do.
I would support that.
Well, my issue is that it was a change and, well, the staff made the change and then made the recommendation. And so I guess I'm more asking why that was the case. I'm not necessarily asking to deliberate or my decision be changed based on what is being talked about.
So you'd like to have the staff briefly explain the revision?
Ken's here.
Yeah.
Okay, Ken?
Yeah, good evening. Kent Rollston, Transportation Planner. As far as how that worked, Mr. Botchway, it was really just a compromise. Staff came in a little bit higher than what I think a few of the council members supported during our meeting. And I think I mentioned this at the last work session, we discussed traffic calming, is that those numbers, there's nothing magic about those numbers. It was to just try and garner enough support that we felt good moving forward and making sure we're funding projects that the neighborhood really wants. So again, nothing magical about those numbers, but some of the higher numbers that we recommended originally, I would say represent more of what we saw in our random survey of other traffic calming programs across the country, you know, in our 10 or 12 different programs we looked at.
But I guess going back to Susan Knight's point, is that true of the response rate or the approval rate being in the actual response rate? And so 50% respond, then the approval is of that 50%? So you could potentially only have, like Susan said, 30% that are wanting a particular thing to happen in the neighborhood?
Right. It's more of a threshold where if you would not, in this case, get the 50% survey response rate, we would not plan to move forward at all, is really, so they're really separate, separate measures is the way that I see it working. So one of the first things we would do is look at that survey response rate. And if you only have 25% of those folks that received a survey in the neighborhood to actually respond, then we would bring that to the council and say, it's just not a viable project. So that would stop it right there. So really, you have to meet that 50% survey response rate. Then of those 50%, you need to have 50 or 60% approval rate.
So it's not really 50% times 60% equals 30%?
Yes, it is. If you meet the minimums, it is 50% times 60% is 30%.
You split a street, one's on 50%, the other side gets it, and then this side could vote 60% on the one half. And they could approve a project for the entire neighborhood, I guess is my question. Two halves, 50% 50% on this side, if they all respond, 60%, it would be for both sides of the neighborhood even though their 50% wouldn't have wanted to do it.
I'm not sure if I follow, I'm sorry.
I think, I think we ought to discuss this during the formal meeting because it, you know, it gets to the question of whether we want to approve what's being recommended by the staff. So, you know, we can deliberate this and it's totally fair.
Well, I guess if my, if my equation doesn't make sense based on what I'm reading, then I'm going to vote differently.
It makes sense.
Okay.
I know my man.
It doesn't make sense to me, but only because I'm not a very good mathematician, but I can try and explain it to you.
Okay.
But I want to make sure that everybody understands what we're voting on.
Dennis agrees with me.
Dennis would be a better resource than I.
I think it's-
Quickly, I would just quickly insert, one of the issues I think we face in Iowa City is in certain neighborhoods you have high rental rates. So the, you know, the, in certain parts of Iowa City, you may not have much interest simply because of the nature of the neighborhood. But we, I just wanted to insert that idea so you would have some time to mull it over.
Okay, we'll return to this during the formal meeting. Any other agenda items? Questions with regard to agenda items?
Sorry, I've got to flip back.
While you're doing that, I'll make a comment on item 3D 5, the five-year agreement with IDOT, the Department of Transportation for Maintenance and Repair of what primary roads located within Iowa City. Yeah, I just wanted to observe that after the meeting with IDOT Director Paul Trembino on the 21st, which Jeff, I think you were present for and-
I was not, we had-
Ron was there, I know.
Ron and Kent were both there.
Yeah, and you, John, you were there. Anyhow, after that meeting, or during the meeting, actually, I asked Director Trembino if Iowa City could, if IDOT would permit Iowa City to assume control and responsibility over Highway 1 within Iowa City's borders. And I asked that just out of curiosity, not to push a particular point, but I know we've had conversations about wishing we had sufficient control over Burlington Street so we can make some revisions to the streetscape and that kind of thing. I understood we could not get, assume that kind of control, that IDOT wouldn't let us do that. But Director Trembino made it very clear, yes, we could have that conversation and yeah, we probably could. Afterwards, Ron told me, no, it's not really a good idea for financial reasons, which we don't need to get into now. But I just want you all to know, I had the, that topic came up. And so at some point in the future, it might come up again, but I think the timing is not good for reasons we could go into, but we don't need to right now. Other agenda items?
I guess I, can we bring up reference to correspondence here?
Yeah.
I just wanted to bring up a concern that item 3F 15, that was the concern of Casey and Dennis Beffler relating to smoking in the Ped Mall. Have we been getting a lot of reports of unauthorized smoking in the Ped Mall or has that been an issue? I don't know. It certainly seemed like they had some concerns about that. And what is the status of that?
This is the first concern that I've seen. I can't speak for the police department and tell you, you know, how many calls they may, they may get on it, but it certainly hasn't risen to the point where I'm cognizant of a lot of people complaining. You know, it's one of those ordinances that are very tough to enforce. We don't always have a presence downtown and probably the times at which there's the most violations, which would be later in the evening, getting into bar hours, our police officers tend to be occupied with more pressing issues. But it is enforced. Simon was telling me this morning that over the weekend, he saw it being enforced in the Ped Mall, so.
Something to monitor.
Troy, I know you're sitting out there in the audience, is there anything you want to add to that?
He was hiding back there, sorry.
You've got to come up, if you're going to do it, come up.
Troy Kelsey, Police Department. I think there's some validity to their complaint. Within the last month, I was, actually had a meeting at Formosa of some bar and restaurant owners and it was pointed out that on the benches right outside their seating area, there was what appeared to be a transient smoking. The enforcement that Simon saw was probably largely as a result of, I came back and spoke with Officer Schwint and had him redraw a map that shows for officers where smoking is allowed, where it isn't. About the same time, City Manager Fruin had forwarded me the email that you're referencing, the correspondence, and it was already in the works, but that refresher training went out to officers and there is increased attention. Said, I don't care whether tickets are written, whether it's enforcement or whether it's education, but there needs to be, there needs to be some reminders on it right now. It was a timely letter, it was a fair letter.
Fabulous, thank you.
3D 1, so this is a ACT first edition. This isn't necessarily germane to the actual project, but I guess my question is, is, I think we received correspondence about, you know, the loss of jobs in other areas. I can't remember the company out of West Branch that primarily has, West Branch and Iowa City. Does AC 2 do the same thing in relation to that? Because I see they're adding some, or expanding a little bit here from an industrial standpoint, but that's, I mean, I looked at that and that's my first thought as far as, you know, do we get any type of correspondence as far as, you know, what type of jobs would be created with this expansion?
No, this is actually their, I believe that's their McCarran Center on the south part of town where they did a lot of their paper processing over the years. This is a subdivision of that property and my guess would be that their intention is to sell off a piece of that property. So they're, as they're going to more of a digital platform, I think that they're probably more looking at liquidating this asset as opposed to growing down there.
With regard to item 3E 1, which is about the budget, I'd like to ask Dennis a question. I think I know the answer, but you know, I just kind of want to ask it. Are there any surprises in the amendment? Any bad news we should be concerned about or good news we should be pleased about?
Well, I mean, most of them are carry forage from the prior year appropriations. I don't know if there's any surprises there. There is a complete list attached to the memorandum. So if there's anything on the list you have a question about, I'd try and answer it for you. Just wanted you to say that.
Okay, thank you Dennis. Other agenda item questions?
I guess I have a question about correspondence 3F 14, the correspondence from Martine Dunwald regarding Horace Mann traffic. I did see the staff response, but we're sort of, is this, are we continuing to have that conversation with the Department of Transportation in terms of the traffic? It just seems to be a reoccurring issue.
Tomorrow.
Okay, great.
Yep, scheduled.
Question answered, great work.
And we've got a long agenda and I've seen the draft and all that information, did make it to the DOT, so we'll have that discussion tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
I'm glad you brought that up because I did have a concern about that too, living close to a school myself. Crossing guards, it seemed to be, crossing guard was one of my major answers or responses to that. And they're on, they're on a very short timeframe that they're around the school, so, and the kids are coming and going at all times. So I was kind of concerned that the response was, the answer was crossing guards.
Mm-hmm. Thanks Ken.
Any other agenda item questions? If not, let's move to appointments to boards and commissions. We have what, one position to fill on historic preservation, the Historic Preservation Commission. There's one applicant, Kevin Boyd, to fill an unexpired at-large term that ends on July the 1st, 2017. It's a male requirement position.
He's a wonderful young man.
Yep, Kevin will be great.
Known him since he was born. So he's living in the north end there, he just bought a house up there. He'd been in Washington DC for a while, but he wanted to get back to Iowa. His grandfather was a builder, built a lot of the houses down by the Sycamore Mall. So he comes with a background in building. So his mother's on the Iowa City Foundation Board, or Johnson County Foundation, so I think he's a wonderful choice, young man that I think we'll be very proud of.
I can say my dog Watson likes him too, because we walked that street odd and several months ago, Kevin just kind of yelled out at me and Watson while we were walking and introduced himself and all that. So, okay, I don't hear a ground swell of opposition, so Kevin Boyd, I mean, I've got to write that down.
Very much in favor.
Which leads us to the info packet discussion for the August 18th packet. Anything you want to bring up about it? I noticed the packets are getting shorter.
We had an extra week between meetings.
I just want to say IP 6, congrats to Henry Harper.
Yeah.
Kind of, sorry.
Go ahead.
IP 5, kind of after the fact, but it's nice to see that First Avenue is now back open.
Somebody was praising about that today.
Broke through it that first morning and it is nice to have it open.
It looks really good too. I was very impressed. Sorry, I was really excited.
I'm sure a lot of people are going to be happy with that. Anything else about the August 18th packet? Going once, going twice, going three times. How about the August 25th packet? Terry, could you, well, do you want to say anything about the paratransit advisory committee's meeting?
The report, just, I don't know that we have to take formal, we've already kind of discussed it, that we were just, we're downsizing the number of people, the county was going to vote on it, just having one person on it. But we've already talked about it, I think, here, that we are just going to have one person from each entity on it. It just will work a little better. Talking about First Avenue opening, that will be a great plus for the paratransit because they've been stopped so many times by the trains and with the construction that that will help their on-time increase dramatically because there are a lot of people that use that area, so. Other than that, just went over some of the state regulations and people are still a little confused on how they get their services because there's only a limited number of people that are providers. But, and they did talk about the new, more of a van-type taxi that will be a smaller use, but they're still working on funding there. North Liberty working on their single route service that will enhance the paratransit because it's tough for them to get up there, they only get up there a couple of times a day, so that's all being discussed. And we're supposed to get a report at our December meeting, what's happening with North Liberty.
Good deal, thanks. Anything else about the August 25th packet?
Say IP 2, it was an email from Shams, talking about Ma Security following Queen shooting. I just thought it was a, you know, frankly disgusting article, not necessarily the nature of the article, or not necessarily the actual article, but just the nature of it. And just for us to be keenly aware of the Muslim community and how that, while it might not be happening here, you know, puts, you know, all folks of Muslim faith in somewhat fear and concern for what's going to happen in any particular city. So I just wanted that as a kind of reference point. And that there's a, oops, sorry, and that there's a human rights event on October 13th, particularly related, I think you're invited, to this particular issue. particularly related, I think you're invited to this particular issue.
Yeah, I just read a lengthy article in the New York Times about Denmark and its internal challenges pertaining to recent refugees who happen to be Muslim. All right, so.
Last thing was IP3, so I put another article in there. It's not about police searching for two after gunshots reported on Highway 90 in Myrtle Beach. It is about the parking rules in effect. It was kind of, we're not having this discussion, obviously, but in reference to John talking about, or not John, John mentioning, but greater discussion on residential parking and how they have looked at it. Now, they're looking at it from a larger visitor spectrum for people patronizing Myrtle Beach, but I just thought it was a really cool way. It didn't take that long to set it up on my phone and do it and it frankly felt pretty good and I just left and that was it, so.
Didn't get a ticket?
No, because I figured it out. It's a running meter, it's actually a running meter. And so as you leave, you make sure that, you have to make sure that you stop and then leave, but it was pretty cool from that standpoint.
All right, should we move on to the September 1st packet? KXIC radio schedule. I'd be happy to volunteer for October the 5th. And I could actually do a Friday show, which I've never done before and which means I'd be completely incoherent instead of just partially incoherent.
Then maybe you should pass.
Yeah.
Hard questions.
Yeah, so like Friday, October the 21st, I could do the Friday show?
I can do October 7th and September 21st.
September 1st. Wait, there we go.
So that's, so that's popping into Wednesday.
Okay, Kingsley, you wanted the 7th and the?
October 20, or September 21st, excuse me, there you go.
Thank you.
I'll do Friday, October 7th. That'll be-
I just said that.
Yeah, I thought Kingsley just said the 7th and the 21st.
That's the end of the baseball.
We can do it together.
You want to do it together?
We can do it together.
I have to collect from Jake Capron, because the Cubs are beating the White Sox so bad.
Yeah, and send Jake a note, hard questions for Terry Dickens, October 7th.
Okay, the 7th, 2, okay.
Yeah, we'll both do it then.
So I have the 14th, the 28th, the 12th, and the 19th yet. I can do September 14th. 14th, Susan?
I'll do the 19th of October, it hasn't been taken.
Rockney, okay. 28th and 12th.
I'll do the September 28th.
Dickens, the 28th.
It's my birthday, make sure you give me a shout out.
12th.
I'm out of town. Terry, could, could we?
Which one?
Could I do the 28th?
And which date?
And you could do October 12th or?
Sure. All right, I just told Terry it's my birthday, so make sure you give me a shout out.
Thomas, the 28th, Dickens, the 12th.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll get a schedule out.
31.
Okay, we're good to go on that, huh? Excellent, thanks, everybody. Any other item, topics or items to discuss on the September 1st packet?
John and I are doing a listening post September 17th from 9:00 to 11:00 o'clock. I was wondering whether someone could cover from 10:00 to 11:00, because I think Backyard Abundance is doing their opening for the Edible Classroom on the north side of Robert 8 Lee.
Why don't we talk about scheduling for listening posts off, not at a public meeting?
Okay.
Only because there's a lot of shifting that occurs and then people who are listening think for sure you're going to be there, and when there's a last minute change, we don't usually say who's going to be there. So why don't?
We will defer.
Why don't we talk about it and I'll send an email and see if we can swap those details?
Terrific.
Okay?
Anything else?
Well, Jim, you and I will be going to the League of Cities, Iowa Cities, next week.
Yeah, was it Wednesday and Thursday? Yeah, so that gets us into council time?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so that's your, one of the things you're going to say, right? What, what else do you want to draw attention to in council time?
That's it.
Yeah, okay. Others, council time stuff?
Save it. Anything? Nope.
All right, but there's some things I want to mention to you. Let's see. First, Susan and I met with Chris Lynch and Brian Kershling on the 17th, had a good conversation happily over beers at Hilltop Tavern. I had great fun welcoming people to the Farm to Street Dinner on the 18th. I thought it was a brilliant success.
Great evening.
Really great fun. I know you were there, Susan?
Yep.
Just tremendous success. I had lunch with John Lundell and Amy Nielsen on the 19th, had a pretty productive and fun conversation out at Brown Deer, watched people teeing off, hitting big slices off to the right and duck hooks off to the left. I spoke at the Rotary Luncheon on the 25th. There were, I'd guessed, maybe 100 people there, kind of a typical luncheon. And I'd like to thank Kingsley for a really kind and generous introduction he made for me. Also, I was interviewed on KRUI Radio on the 26th. I have no idea when that's going to appear on the radio. Somehow, I never, I never heard that and I couldn't find it on their schedule, so I don't know the answer to that one. I'm going to be doing my fifth mayor's walk on September the 7th, this time out in the northeast side of town along Amherst, from Rochester to Washington Street and wherever else I might end up going. Along with John, you know, going to the Iowa League of Cities meeting. And along with Kingsley, we'll be participating in the 30 Iowa City Teach-In on September the 16th on the Ped Mall. Kingsley, can you describe what the 30 Iowa, the 30 Iowa City is?
Yeah, basically, it's a group of various professionals talking about interests that relates to, you know, your particular field. And so we'll be talking about, I can't remember off the top of my head, we'll be talking about how, you know, race and other things happen at the council table and how we deliberate on it, so giving somewhat of an informational session for folks that are a part of it. And that's kind of what the framework is as far as people, again, you know, interfacing with different professionals, whether it be the university or obviously Iowa City Government from a council standpoint. I'm not sure whether or not, you know, city staff are invited to have any type of discussion, but it's just various, various professionals, yeah. But there's a, I'll send out the communication, I guess I forgot to do that, in relation to, there's, there's a laundry list from the 16th through the 18th of people that are associated or participating.
Yeah.
Marion, I'll send that to you right now.
Kendra Malone is the organizer, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, good deal. And one other thing I wanted to mention to you, some of you probably noticed that The Press Citizen on September the 2nd published a version of my memo about downtown development. I want you all to know that I neither knew it was going to be published, nor requested that it be published, nor authorized the version that was published. So, you know, it surprised me when I opened up the paper and saw it there. That said, I hope the fact that it appeared in the paper will further the conversation with regard to downtown development. So I'm not mad or anything, I just want you to know, I didn't kind of get it in there intentionally or something like that. Okay, moving on, I guess, from council time, how about meeting schedule?
Affordable housing is next.
Anything to announce about that?
Skip it.
Well, the only thing I know of, Susan and Rockney, we have an Economic Development Committee meeting on the, what's the date? On Friday? No, what's the date? On the 9th, yeah.
Friday.
Okay, so we can move off beyond that. How about pending work session topics? Marion, you and I briefly discussed the possibility of focusing some work session time on work sessions. Do you want to say a few words about that, or should I, would it be?
We, we will be preparing a memo on some different approaches that other communities have taken on work sessions and in light of some comments that you've made recently as well, and just presenting some different options available for work session discussion and hope that you'll give staff then further direction based on that.
Yeah, so just, it's a heads up, basically. We all, we will all be receiving an email from, memo from Marion about that particular topic. Okay, and on the 20th, we're going to discuss the Affordable Housing Action Plan and provide staff direction on the various recommendations contained in it, so we need to read that carefully and be prepared to provide direction that night. Okay, moving on, let's see, what's next? Upcoming community events, council invitations?
The Voxman, they're doing tours, I believe they moved it to the 15th now of September.
That's the downtown district tours, yeah?
Right, so that was the 14th, but they moved it because of the, I think the president's Hancher event is the day before, so.
So there are quite a few ribbon-cutting events coming up, speaking of the university stuff. So I asked Marion to give me the right dates, because I wasn't really sure about that, so let me go over them quickly. Hancher's ribbon-cutting is on September the 9th. I didn't write down the time for that, but anyhow, September the 9th. The Visual Arts Building is on Friday, October the 7th at 3:00 PM. Voxman Music Building on Friday, October the 21st at 4:30 PM. And Children's Hospital on Saturday, November the 5th at 11:00 AM. This is a big deal, isn't it? I mean, all these things opening up, so congratulations to the university. The last thing I want to mention is that there's going to be a Monarch Butterfly Festival Sunday, September the 11th, from 1:00 to 2:30 PM at the East Side Recycling Center. So that'll be a fun event, I'm looking forward to it. Anything else we need to mention? If not, I think our work session's done. Thank you.